Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order Wednesday, June 6, 2021, 5:30 PM. Would the members please introduce themselves? I'm John Fink, Chair.
John Delio, vice chair.
Rick Lyles.
Nelson Giel.
Molly.
Eric Rich.
Holly Freeman, alternate.
Patrick Lyons, alternate number two.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the adoption of the minutes from December 2nd. Is there a motion regarding the minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is an internal matter, however, it's on amending the planning board meeting start time to 5:30. Usually it's been 7:30 on the live meetings. Does anyone have any thoughts of meeting permanently at 5:30? We're including when we're going live.
I prefer the earlier time.
John?
Yeah, I'm good with the 5:30. I'll make a pitch again, though, even if it has to be kind of a split in-person and the the council chambers and on Zoom. I prefer the in-person. City councils meeting in person, school boards meeting in person. You know, I mean, we had one workshop that we did kind of a split in-person or Zoom. That seemed to work out good. You know, I just, where I'm using a tablet, I can only see a couple people at one time. You know, the council and school board can do it. I would hope the planning board would do it. There's my pitch again.
Anyone else have thoughts on this?
Splitting, it's fine. I'm not comfortable with meeting only in, only in person.
What about the 5:30 time?
5:30 is good.
Molly?
5:30 is also great for the referred.
Mark?
I like the 5:30.
Okay, and Patrick?
5:30 is fine. No, that works for me.
Okay. So let me make a motion that the planning board will be meeting in the future at 5:30 PM officially. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Carrie, are you happy now?
Works for me, John. Thank you.
Okay. Next item. Final plan review to a previously approved major subdivision entitled Fox Run. For Homestead Earthworks Incorporated, the proposal is to divide a six-and-a-half acre parcel, tax map 40 lot 5-1. Okay, into two lots, creating lot 5 consisting of 2.8 acres and reducing lot 4 to 3.7 acres. This is located on Route 1A, Bangor Road. All the subject property is located in the urban zone. Someone representing the applicant, please.
Hi, Steve Salisbury for the applicant.
Go ahead, just fill the public in.
Sure, this is our second hearing on amending the Fox Run subdivision. And we are adding one lot to a subdivision that was previously four lots. Thus requiring a second planning board hearing.
Excuse me. Gravity still works. Any questions from the planning board? None? Is this really the Ellsworth Planning Board? No questions?
This is an easy one.
They're saving up.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't bode well for me. I got two more after this, so.
You're the one that is fearful.
But Steve, it'll probably be the last one where you're really right over the calls.
Okay, that's fine.
Does anyone have a motion regarding this matter?
Need a public hearing first, John.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Let me open the public hearing. Anyone may comment on this matter. When recognized, please state your name for the record. And is there any public who wish to comment? Carrie, do you have anyone?
I don't, John.
Nothing on Zoom.
Nothing on Zoom, okay. In that case, I shall close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plan for revision to previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Fox Run for Homestead Earthworks Incorporated. Proposal to buy the 6.5 acre parcel, tax map 49 lot 5-1 into two lots, creating lot 5 consisting of 2.8 acres and reducing lot 4 to 3.7 acres located on Route 1A, Bangor Road. All the property is located in the urban zone.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Steve, first hurdle done.
Thank you.
John, are we supposed to do a voice roll call for votes on Zoom for the? I believe that's a requirement.
I don't know. That's a good, I have not heard about that.
I think you're supposed to go in order for Zoom meetings and do a voice vote for the governor's emergency orders last year that permitted this.
Okay, in that case, I vote aye.
John Delio, aye.
Rick Lyles, aye.
Nelson Giel, aye.
Mark Rich, aye.
Okay, thank you.
And the previous. Meetings longer, you know?
I'm sure we can accommodate you. But you'll have to participate. Okay, the previous motion was on the I'm sorry, though. Okay, next item, I'm sorry, preliminary plan review for a major subdivision entitled Patrick's Way for Bridge Twin LLC. The proposal is to create two new residential units on a 15.2 acre acres, tax map 35, lots 20 and 21, located on Patrick's Way. All of the subject property is located in the neighborhood and rural zones. Someone representing the applicant?
Steve Salisbury for Bridge Twin LLC. Thank you, John. The parcel now contains four dwelling units, two units that stand alone in a duplex apartment building. And Bridge Twin would like to install two more standalone living units on this property. Now, we're gonna need subdivision slash site plan approval because duplex was installed less than five years ago. So technically, we're doing three or more units in a five-year period. So we need this planning board's approval for that. We're gonna extend in the city water further into development and add a fire hydrant at the intersection of Patrick's Way and Main Street. There will be a single leach field servicing these two new standalone units. Neither one of which will be visible from a adjoining residential property. I'll try, for the public's benefit, to do a quick screen, a screen share showing you this development. There we go. I'll point out the existing unit, number one, unit number two, with the cursor is the duplex 3 and 4. And the two new units that we're proposing to install are 5 and 6 at the, near the top of the page with the leach field to the left of those two units. I'll give the public some idea of what we're proposing.
Planning board, questions, comments?
I'll just say, I mean, I sent an email about a week ago, and all the planning board members saw it. White, Brighton, Steve answered my questions. There was some confusion with tax maps and stuff, but they I wasn't sure whether to go through a subdivision for houses. Didn't seem to be on the tax map, but that got all cleared up and everything was okay.
Anyone else?
I assume there's never any intention to sell these units off separately or anything?
Not to my knowledge, no. If it's sold, the whole parcel will go as one.
Okay. This is just a kind of a nitpicky little thing on the the permit application, okay?
Yes.
Under part four, down under M and N, which is estimate cost of public infrastructure. My understanding is that this is going to require some more water lines and stuff like that. Should that be recorded in that area of the application?
Well, there really be private water lines because the city will not own them once we get to the curb stop. And there's already private, you know, private city water into the property now. We're just gonna extend that further in.
Wasn't there some stuff here about a fire hydrant and stuff, though?
Yes, we'll put a fire hydrant in.
Okay. So that doesn't need to be recorded in, I'm really a question for John. Think, that does have to be recorded in the application there? I mean, I'm fine with it if that's right. I have no real problem other than the possible.
The final plan. The mylaws submitted to us should have the water line shown on it. Just.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they do, John. We do show the water line going in the connection over to the new hydrant in the street.
Does it also show the driveway extending into the new development?
Yes, that driveway already existed.
Okay.
If I may, the
Yes.
hydrant is going to be in the city right away, and it's going to be owned by the city.
Okay.
The developer's simply putting it in.
That was my understanding, yes. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yes, there's, so to confirm, there's no public sewer lines that run this far?
That is correct.
Okay.
And what were the, well, this, let me open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to comment upon this? Carrie and Nate, do you have any people?
I don't have any questions, John.
Nothing here on Zoom.
Okay, in that case, what would the planning board like to do?
I will make a motion that we find a preliminary, preliminary plan review for major subdivision plan entitled Patrick's Way for Bridge Twin LLC to be complete. Proposal is to create two residential, two new residential units on a 15.2 acre tax map, 35 lots 20 and 21, located on Patrick's Way. All the subject property is located in the neighborhood and rural zones.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Rick Lyles, aye.
Nelson Giel, aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item, preliminary plan for, for a major use subdivision entitled 8 Union Street for Barbara and Dale Joyce. This proposal is to subdivide the interior of the building to create a multi-use property resulting in residential, office and commercial space on a 7/10 acre parcel located 8 Union Street. Tax map 137 lot 3. All the subject property is in the neighborhood zone. Someone representing the applicant, please.
Steve Salisbury again for the applicant. We have a existing structure on this property that had just previously been used for many, many years as a medical office building. Now under contract to be sold, and the new owners will like to convert the medical office space into business office space and with a small gallery. And on the upstairs, they want to have two residential units, which you can see on the floor plan. The only outside exterior modifications will be a new handicap accessible ramp just on the east side of the building to service the five or six offices on that side of the house. There is already a handicap ramp servicing the downtown side of the house, if you will. Presently, there's 20 delineated parking spaces, and we're gonna go to 19 spaces with the handicap ramp that will eliminate one parking space. But my parking calculations show we, we still have adequate parking for the proposed uses. And again, I can do a quick screen share for the public's benefit.
Yes.
My words. And I lost my Zoom meeting. Oh, dear. Okay, orientation at the bottom of the screen is Union Street. Bayview is on the right-hand side of the screen. The building there is where my cursor is circling. And the new handicap ramp I was talking about is here on the east side of the building. There's the existing ramp, and that will stay to service the downtown side of the building. The letter that you received from one of the neighbors is down on the lower right-hand side. Just diagonally across from the Bayview and Union Street intersection is where Mr. Bellis lives. The man that wrote the letter to the planning board. Yeah, that's all I got. I'll stop sharing that.
Okay. We did receive a letter from Mr. Bellis. Carrie answered his questions. Do you want me to go over the? Well, it's a lengthy letter. If I can summarize. Hold it, I just lost it. Let's see, come on back. Come on tablet, do your job. Okay. One of the questions that Mr. Bellis had regarding was regarding when the zoning district formerly called the residential zone was changed to the current status of neighborhood zone, and that was in 2012. The city repealed Chapter 19 of the land use ordinance and adopted Chapter 56 of the Uniform Unified Development Ordinance, which was a little more than a name change. There were also changes in zoning. There were public hearings held, and the planning board recommended it, and the city council adopted it after their hearing. And the former urban residents are one zone was replaced with what is now the neighborhood zone. Next question that he had. Let me see. Let me read the question. I seem to recall that about 25 years ago or thereabouts, a new zoning district was created, especially for this immediate area on Union Street near the hospital, and ought to expand the uses permitted on the residential zoning so as to allow for medical uses such as doctors' offices. My second question to you was, what was the name of this area special zoning district which first allowed medical offices in the residential neighborhood? And the answer is that the area referred to is what was called the hospital overlay, which was, the overlay was abolished in June of 2012. However, the medical offices have been allowed in the neighborhood zone or previously known as R2 Zone, going back to at least 1975. In June of 75, zoning ordinance through chapter, through the chapter 19 dated 2012 repealed in 2012 and replaced with the Unified Development Ordinance. There were, the language described the area of the hospital overlay, and within that area the medical offices were approved or could be approved.
Is this within the overlay area?
Well, we no longer have an overlay area.
Was it included in the overlay area?
Yeah.
No.
Well, hold it. Do you want the? Go ahead, Dwight.
I'm sorry. We pulled up, Larry Guyner, the city assessor, pulled up one of the maps from 1996. And that, that zone is cut right out of the overlay. It encompasses everything from Bayside up to the hospital, Kyleisle Street down, almost a triangle, but this one lot, and Steve Salisbury can correct me, I'm sure he looked at it. This one lot was not in the overlay district.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about this one? Do you want to wait?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, you know, this one, and I guess the, one of the other ones down the line here, they said that this is a the offices and so forth are permitted use in the neighborhood zone. And commercial offices and professional offices are only permitted use if they are what is the word, home occupancy, and the building has to be primarily residential with the office being secondary. And I could find nowhere, and I could easily be wrong, where the offices are in fact you know, allowed if that's the principal use of the building. Now, that being said, I have really no problem at all with this particular development or anything that goes, whatever's been proposed. At the same time, it seems that it does not, you know, that's really not a lot of use as stated.
Okay.
At the same time, you're converting something that was offices already to something that wants to be offices again. And I'm not sure whether that comes under our existing non-conforming use or what, but good, I suppose.
Okay, let me get back to Mr. Bellis's questions here.
You gonna answer that one?
Well, why don't we deal with his letter first and then
Okay, all right.
Do the whole thing.
What? That's what I asked you.
Okay. Again, I'll just read his question and the answer that was given. Today, our areas today, our area, and indeed much of the core village area inhabited by Ellsworth residents is identified as being zone neighborhood. The purpose of this zone is defined under 306.1C to recognize those transition areas and provide for a well-planned, compatible, mixed-use environment, but fails to articulate from to what exactly we're transitioning. Further reads that the purpose of the zone is to protect existing and attract new residential neighborhoods. Nowhere does it state that the zone is to be used for commercial space purposes. Yet, your letter, that is the notification of the upcoming meeting. Nowhere does it state that the zone is to be used for commercial space purposes, yet your letter indicates that Joyce's proposal is to subdivide the interior of the building to create a multi-use property resulting in commercial space. My third question was, why was any consideration for commercial activities allowed when the current zoning precludes commercial use? And while, all the while, this is failing to protect an existing residential neighborhood. The answer given to Mr. Bellis is the current zoning does not preclude commercial uses. Specific commercial uses are allowed in the neighborhood zone. Under the city's current ordinance, Chapter 56, Article 8, Section 819.4, offices for professional, scientific or technical services or administrative services and fine art studios are allowable uses in the neighborhood zone. The neighborhood zone is defined as follows. The purpose of this zone is to recognize those transition areas and provide for a well-planned, compatible, mixed-use environment. It encourages a combination of land uses which might normally be regarded as incompatible. Uses located, locating in the zone shall be landscaped to ensure compatibility and screening. The purpose of this zone is to protect existing and attract new residential neighborhoods. It's either served or has the potential to be served by public water and sewer. And that's the end of the questions that were answered by staff. Now, as to the question of the subdivision of the building and it seems that, to me at least, that it's that it is permissible to subdivide in that manner, but the uses that go in it must conform to the zone. And that is a separate question from the simple subdivision of the property into separate offices. What goes in those offices must comply with the ordinance. Questions or comments from the board further? John?
I have a question for Steve. The application kind of goes back and forth between six office units, two residential units. But then it also talks about commercial space. You know, the offices, I mean, if they were defined under our definitions, under the professional and business offices? I mean, is that what you're looking at, Steve? And this is basically lawyers, accountants, financial architects? I mean, businesses like that? Is that what you're, these type of offices is what you're, the applicant wants?
That would be my expectation, John. And the owner, the owner's gonna live upstairs and have her photography lab and display studio downstairs on the downtown side of the building. That would be the, you know, some of that space I tried to describe in my narrative. I'm sorry if I didn't describe it very well.
I mean, getting to the commercial use, I mean, the spreadsheet we have doesn't, and the definition doesn't really doesn't really have a good definition of the commercial use. But an allowed use there would be a convenience store and custom manufacturing. But an allowed use there would be a convenience store and custom manufacturing. I mean, technically, if we approve this, you know, could she convert all six offices or rent all six offices out as a convenience store? I mean, I think that's what Mr. Bellis is kind of leaning towards and and I mean, I would agree that retail, I mean, a convenience store in that building would not be a compatible use for the for the neighborhood well as custom manufacturing. I mean, there's, there's no good definition of custom manufacturing. I mean, would your applicant object to those restrictions being added to the motion when we get to that?
No, I would say that would be fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention something. Rick, you brought up the question about the professional establishments. You know, we can't change it now, but if you read that first part, any establishment home occupation, I think there's a common miss in there. And I reason I say that when you get down to the bottom, it allows a healthcare facility. So it's hard to believe this is only for home occupations. And then the other part, we had to look at, we had to look at another definition too. And that's a personal service establishment, which isn't allowed use. Several things that fall into that category that would be allowed in that building.
Well, yeah, are you looking at paragraph eight, eight nineteen point four?
Where it's I just read the definitions. I just copied definitions at ordinance.
Okay, well, I was reading under permitted home occupations, which is eight nineteen point four, which is the only place I could find that commercial uses were listed as being okay. And that seems to be a problematic then. Because clearly it's a permitted home. If it was just a single office in a residential unit, no problem. You know, it's a permitted home occupation thing. Okay. But the fact that there are multiple offices and so forth by my reading makes it a problem. Now, again, I actually don't have any trouble with this sort of use being there, but I think by the by the letter, there's an there's an issue there that needs to be resolved. And that's as much about a precedent for other things coming on down the line as it is for anything else.
If I may comment. The question before us this evening is essentially, is this a complete application or not? The merits of it would be taken up at the next meeting for final approval. At which point Steve may have some more information from for us. I would prefer that we not spend our time this evening unless you disagree with me discussing the merits, but rather limiting ourselves to whether the application is complete. Anyone have thoughts on my?
That's fine with me. As long as we get back to it next time.
Yeah, well, we'll have to get to it because that is the point at which the
Hey, John?
Yes?
John, I did, I know John Delio had a question concerning that of definitions. And he is correct. There is, there is some issues here concerning definitions. What what this building has been used for in the past is basically considered business. Even though it's a medical office, non-ambulatory is considered a business. Okay, so it's all business and it's continued to be business. When you put, when you say commercial, you're putting every, all your eggs in one basket. Because regardless of whether it's a medical office or a lawyer's office, that's business. If she turns that into a store, that changes the occupancy of that. So now you've you've got a
That's why we're getting some strange signal here. Ah, that stopped. Go ahead.
Okay, so you've basically got now mercantile. Creates a store. I don't know why I'm getting feedback.
Excuse me one moment. I think that's Mark Rich. Do you have two feet running at the same time?
How can I shut one down?
Just mute one of the two.
Okay.
All right, Mike, continue.
Okay, I did. So the the idea having a store changes the occupancy use of that building is very definite.
It seems that the the section that was pointed out earlier, eight nineteen point four might help you. So let me back up a second. So, John, I I agree that there there's a procedural obligation tonight, and it maybe doesn't go as far as this conversation is. But I would suggest maybe something for folks to ponder between now and the next meeting and maybe something for Steve to talk to the the principals about here because eight nineteen dot four might provide some some help in regards to what Mike is bringing up because there's a whole list of what basically I read as desk jobs that are that are business types that are that are approved. And unless I'm missing something, which is entirely possible, I'm not seeing like retail store or manufacturing anywhere in here. So it would seem to me that if we could collectively agree that the uses that are documented eight nineteen dot four are what the spaces would be leased out for in the future. That would already preclude some of the concerns that have been raised both by Mike and John D. So if if maybe the the owner and the potential buyer aren't familiar with eight nineteen dot four, maybe that's something that Steve or whoever could have a conversation with them about. And as long as they're not looking to host business types that are not on this list, there may not be an issue here.
I I disagree. There's still an issue because those that list is permitted home occupations. And what's being proposed is not a home occupation, but will more than willing to let that go till next time.
Right, I understand. I'm just suggesting that there there is a printed list that's that's in the ordinance now and in the absence of having to invent something custom for this. You know, we may go with this language if it's helpful.
Well, I think I think that Steve needs to talk to staff and resolve this because that list in a very real sense is not relevant.
One other issue I saw is of the two dwelling units, residential dwelling units that are proposed, one of them doesn't have a kitchen proposed. And the definition of a residential dwelling unit includes a kitchen. So I don't know if you can create a dwelling unit that does not have a kitchen in it. Understand that pretend is to rent it out. Maybe on a nightly basis. But if it's proposed residential dwelling unit, I don't know if it satisfies that because of the lack of kitchen.
I would agree with Patrick. Yeah, it does. Any dwelling unit defined would have to meet the ordinance's requirements for dwelling unit. Steve?
Yes.
You look like you're making notes.
I am.
So this will need to be addressed on final.
I will have a discussion with staff.
And with your clients, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Further, the physical thing, the the is supposed to have a twenty-foot setback from the street and your drawing and point of fact shows the twenty-foot setback, which actually goes through the building. Obviously, it's been that way forever today. Is that sufficient to make that okay? I would hope it is.
I hadn't given any thought. I assume the building would be grandfathered for the purposes of front setback.
That that would be my hope also, but I think, you know, that's, I think that needs to be articulated somehow.
I don't think the board needs to make any special motion to make that accommodation.
It's above my pay grade to decide that.
Well, yes.
We have evidence of when the building was built. Because as long as you can, you see, we can show that the building was constructed before the enactment of the land use ordinance and setbacks, then then you right there, you can confirm it's a non-conforming structure.
Yeah, but by the way, Rick, everything is above our pay grade because we don't get paid.
From the discussion, where the check was.
Well, I've always wondered if the city council were to grant us a say one hundred percent increase in our pay, what the headline in the newspaper would be.
So we ask for a thousand?
Sure. A lot of people don't understand multiplication by zero, though. Any other questions, comments from the planning board before I open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. Nate and Carrie, does, do you have anyone who wished wished to comment?
No comments from me, John.
Nate?
No comments on Zoom either.
Someone has got to break this precedent. Anyhow, at this point, what would the board like to do?
I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary plan for major use subdivision entitled Eight Union Street for Barbara and Dale Joyce. I accept that as complete.
Is there a second please? In that case, I vote aye.
Rick Lyles.
Okay. So Steve, may that have been the worst that's going to happen to you this evening?
Yeah, so bad.
Okay, and the next item is preliminary plan for a major use site development entitled Gilpatrick Solar LLC for Ryan Stan. The proposal is to construct a nineteen point eight one acre solar energy facility one hundred twenty-six point eight six acre parcel located on Gilpatrick Road, tax map fifty-eight, lot fifteen. All of the subject property is located in the rural and urban zones. Someone representing the applicant, please.
Hello, John. Chris Byers here and Dale Knapp. Evening, everybody.
Oh, I haven't described what the proposal is.
Sure. I'm a, I'm going to share my screen right now, I guess, as we're talking. I think a lot of this is a follow-up for our previous meeting. So we've been working in the background on this project that was discussed at the December meeting. And so just as a quick recap for the group, this is a three point five megawatt solar project proposed off of Gilpatrick Road, which is right here. And we are proposing building a an access road to a project where a ground mounted solar project would be sighted with a fence around it. This is entirely wooded area, so tree clearing is proposed. We've been working, I mean, we we had a lot of homework items after the last meeting with you guys. And I think we've captured captured them. I I believe that all of you have full-size site plans in front of you that we delivered to Carrie. Gosh, it seemed the holidays are messing up my timeline, but I'm assuming you have them. So anyway, we we've been up to kind of some site plan changes here. I know that there were comments about this one particular area here. Mike, I believe you had these these comments to have additional turning space. Kind of shifted the hammerhead towards the wetland and add an additional place that you kind of do like a three-point turn with a larger truck.
Yes, that is correct. We've reviewed it. That that looks very appropriate to us. That was on, that was on a drawing from December twenty-second. Submitted.
That's right. And then in my notes, I had kind of a checklist here. Here is me. There were some other inconsistencies on our part. We we have at this, excuse me, at this wetland crossing right here. It's not a stream, but a wetland. We have this open box culvert that's proposed. And somebody had picked up on the fact on the detail sheet of the open box culvert that the travelway math and just kind of the width here didn't quite add up. And that was a copy paste error on our part. So we've got that resolved now. It's a twenty-foot wide road, but it's an eighteen and a half wide travelway because there's a five-inch curb on either side of that open box culvert. So that as you're going over it, you're not going to accidentally drive off of that. So that was another thing I had. I believe we also shifted the gate to the front entrance right here, access gate. And the the language that we proposed was was very specific because we talked about the fact that the landowner may want to do further development like a house or something here. So it'll remain, this gate will remain in place at the discretion of the property owner. So, you know, if if for some reason access needs to get through, then that's something to pick up with the planning board down the road. But for now, the access gate is is will will exist and be actually built for the project. In addition to the site plan, we had updated the decommissioning plan to talk about just kind of some smaller nuances that the the project, we helped to better define what the end of its operation would be. And I, and and when it ceases operation, I added some language in there that Carrie has since forwarded on to the to the city attorney stating that ceasing operation means that the project no longer is producing power right here, or energy rather. And then it was, there was a minor change. They didn't want to have solid waste. They just wanted it to read waste in general so that it could more broadly cover things. But this is the the tracked changes version that I provided. So I don't think Carrie's gotten feedback from the attorney on this, but these weren't necessarily, you know, major changes either. I guess I'll have one more thing and I'll be, I'll let Dale talk, let you guys ask questions, but we have been going back and forth with Maine Historical Preservation Commission to just update our response. They had some questions for us. And so we've been providing some supplemental information. We will certainly provide you guys with the the final findings that they have, but they just had so many questions. Yeah, we they they were looking for oftentimes it's very common when we submit an inquiry letter to them, there were no kind of pre-contact or archaeological resources of any concern identified kind of within or surrounding the project area. Architecture was one. Typically, they want to see us submit photographs of existing buildings kind of surrounding the site so that they can catalog them and confirm that they're not eligible for listing. And so we've compiled and submitted that response to them and expect something back from them fairly soon. But none of the correspondence we've had with them to date, you know, would indicate that there's any risk of having an impact, any historical resources, especially given the visibility of that project. So again, we base our inquiry letter on sort of the entire property that we've surveyed. And so if you look at the schematic that Chris was showing, it's kind of isolated back behind the trees. And so the only way, even if there was a historical structure adjacent, you'd have to be able to view, see the project from that location for it to be any kind of an impact. And so that's very unlikely. If not impossible at this site. I think that covers most of what we've been working on in the background. Carrie, I don't, I don't know if I've missed anything. I know you've been really helpful in the background there with with. I know you've been really helpful in the background there with, with processing these deliverables.
I think that just about covers everything. You know, of course, just waiting on the historic preservation letter, but we have time since this is just a preliminary review. But everything else, I think, has been addressed. And once I hear back from the attorney, we can confirm if the updates on the decommissioning plan are sufficient.
Yep, great. One open-ended item, Mike, I believe you asked for this. You sent me the information to go with our turning template. If you wanted to have, I think you provided like a detail of your ladder truck. So we, I think Christmas got us jammed up a little bit. We were trying to get this updated, some short staffing, so we don't have that for you yet. But it's definitely in the works and we had to kind of work with just time not on our side over the last two weeks. So it's, just want to let you know that it's on my list and we're, we'll get it to you.
Yeah, and, and the turning template basically is that on your drawings, you actually have shown a 35-foot turning radius on those turnarounds. If you maintain that 35-foot turning radius, the turning template drawings are not required. But if you wanted to reduce that down from 30 foot, then yeah, we would need to have the turning template. So it's, so you have the option, one or the other. If, if you need to reduce that for any particular reason and can show on the turning template that it can be done in less than a 30-foot radius, then, then so be it. Okay?
I'd like to keep it this way, actually. I, you know, I think it provides opportunities for more parking and it can't hurt to have it turned around, especially in the winter time when it's snowing out there and, you know, you kind of have a little less road once the, the snow plows, so we'll leave it as is.
Okay, that's good. 35 foot is acceptable.
Perfect. Great. It's great. Good to know. So anyway, any questions for us or anything else we can provide to be helpful?
Anyone wish to ask something? Yes, John?
Chris, on in section A, which is for the right title and interest, you signed an option back on February 10th, 2020 for one year. Will you be signing a new one? I mean, it expires shortly after our next planning board meeting, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the plan will be approved prior to the expiration of the option. So is that something that you would have to sign a new option to maintain that right title and interest?
Yeah, actually Ryan Stare is online here. Ryan, is that something that you guys are able to work on in the meantime before the next meeting?
Yeah, hey, everyone, I'm with the developer and represent the landowners. So we will actually have a new signed lease option by that point in time.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll update the board with that information.
Okay. The construction period, I know there was a letter from the Federal Fish and Wildlife. And the reason I asked about the proximity to Gilpatrick Brook back, oh, probably 10, 12 years ago, when DOT did a renovation on Route 1A, they, they had to follow some strict guidelines because, I mean, they impacted Gilpatrick Brook, I mean, a heck of a lot more than they actually got into the book. I mean, has the feds said anything about your construction period? I mean, they were very strict on when Gilpatrick Brook could be tampered with, so to speak. I mean, is there any, are the feds okay with your construction period?
They are. So that, those kind of restrictions really revolve around in-stream work. So typically, when you're replacing a culvert structure, you're doing work below mean high water. And we don't have any impacts to a waterway or a water body. There is some, there, we're crossing a jurisdictional wetland, but there's no surface water present at that location. And so we don't have to deal with the same challenges, you know, that the DOT may have in the situation you described. And we do have our core permit as well, John. We, we've got that approved from the Army Corps of Engineers for that crossing.
Okay. I just thought, I mean, back when DOT did, I just was kind of surprised that federal inland fishing wildlife considered that salmon habitat, but.
Yeah, it's kind of any waterway in there. It's very conservative, the approach that they take. And what's interesting, oftentimes, especially with some of the, especially with listing of bats, sometimes when you pull a federal permit, you have, you know, just a very, very short window because they don't want you working in the streams, you know, in the winter, and they don't want you cutting trees because of bats during the summer. So it's, it can be really challenging when you have those types of restrictions in your project.
Okay, thank you. And Dwight, I'll ask you about, on the decommissioning plan you mentioned, was there an email from Ed Bear or could you enlighten us on that? Because, I mean, I'd like to see some, yeah, okay.
Yes, Carrie received an email as she left the office. I copied it to Mike. Hang here. I don't know if he can forward it to the planning board or not. Are you in the office, Mike? I'm working from home and I, I kept pulling up a planning board mailing email list from five or six years ago. I think Mike can forward that to me. Basically, Ed told, gave direction to the planning board to move ahead and that could be dealt with at a later time. If we don't, if we don't all come to an agreement. But Michael, get the language to you here real quick.
Okay, that'd be great. Because I just, I'd assume, see something in writing from Ed on, on his opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
And back to Chris, on the operations and maintenance plan in section H, you talk about the inspections and a plant manager. I mean, the plant manager isn't somebody who actually is here full-time, is it?
No, it's, it's an assigned person. And it would typically be somebody that's probably got assignments of multiple projects that they're responsible for in a region. But it's important for us to, to let you guys know, there's a, you know, there's a human that you're, that you're going to be assigned to, not just sort of some generic call center number. So we want to have a responsible party.
Okay, I would ask maybe Dwight and Mike, the monthly inspections that you do, is that something that you would prefer that they copy the city, Mike and Dwight?
I, I think we'd like to have a copy, yes.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to have a copy of that.
Of inspection.
Chris, I guess kind of along the same lines, the, the inspection list of inspections talks about a monthly inspection on many items. However, in, in article, section A, I guess it is, it says, you're talking about traffic, and it just says that a pickup truck may visit the site two to four times a year. But the inspection says that somebody, plant manager, somebody would be there monthly. I mean, the, the inspection is that you list for doing monthly, you're going to do monthly, correct?
Yeah, that's right. You know, I, somewhat of that is, John, it's just a sort of us indicating that it might visit a truck like four times a year is, you know, it's not really based on a plan. This plan is much more specific and IPAD has provided this to us as their, as their plan. So I would use the, the monthly checklist here that you're seeing, whether it's annual or monthly or semi-annual, that this is kind of the guiding plan.
Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Two quickies. Any thought been given to the impact of dust during this, during construction period? Dust and noise on the houses that are right near the corner there of, of whatever, you know, right where you're, right where your driveway goes off into your site. Okay, there's a couple of houses that are right there. And my, my only question is, is there any need for any kind of mitigation of, of, you know, noise and dust and so forth?
Dust is for sure. Oh, it's kind of like a best practice. So if it's really dry that year and, and there's a lot of dust kicking up, then the contractor is obligated, typically in their contract, to provide that, that mitigation.
A water truck of some sort.
A water truck on site, ready to go if need be. And in terms of noise, I think the best way to handle it is just keeping people informed of what's happening. So there are certain stages of the project that are more noisy than others, like pounding the posts, for example. Will probably be the noisiest period of this, but it's also a relatively short period. And so helping people understand when is that going to stop will be a helpful, you know, good neighbor approach. So, you know, the EPC contractor should be working in coordination with your code enforcement officer to make sure that that kind of communication is done the right way. Yeah, and given the distance that it is from that corner, I think that sort of noise disturbance down there is not going to be an issue. I think, you know, traffic, traffic would be something to make sure that the neighbors are aware of.
Trucks coming in and out of that, in and out of the entrance would be, you know, and I agree with you, you know, the other stuff is kind of way down there.
Yeah.
But, but trucks coming in and out are, are right at that house just about.
Yep.
But again, I, I, I think that some sort of good neighbor policy sort of outreach is, is probably sufficient. I don't, I don't know what else you could do, right?
Not really. Yeah, it's not like we can put up like, you know, sort of sound blankets or acoustic stuff. But I think a lot of times people just want to know, when's it going to be over?
Sure.
Yeah.
I get that. The other question I had was about overland runoff going towards Stargazer Way, which is a wonderful name, I suppose. And it, it doesn't look like the water that you're directing down will go over that road or anything. But I was just wondering, because the thing is, you're going from a forested thing to a, to basically a grassland looking thing. And my guess is the water runoff would, would increase. And is that going to be a problem down at that end?
Let me answer that. Well, actually, during sort of stormwater analysis, meadow habitats have received kind of the same treatment as a forested.
Is that right?
Same coefficient? Absolutely. Yep. So again, once that vegetation's established, those, that grassland is going to attenuate stormwater in the same manner that a forested environment would.
Okay, is there, is there a statement up to that extent somewhere in this humongous application?
We, in our, let me point the section out, but we have a stormwater PBR approved permit from the DP. So section F, as in Frank, stormwater management.
Right. And that plan is somewhere in there?
Yeah, as well as the application is kind of the, the application ends up being the permit, so.
Okay.
And we could dig up, if, if, if you take a look at what's included there and you want more background, we could pull some of the DP rules out of chapter 500 that sort of govern how stormwater is managed. And so if you don't see it in there, by all means, reach out and we can provide some more background.
Okay, fair enough. That's it for me.
Anyone else?
I have a question. It's, it's kind of somewhat tangential, but on the decommissioning plan and cost, we've seen a few of these as a board now. And the cost estimates, I understand, is used basing the NYSCR DA. It talks about recycling, trucking to recycling center. Is there a cost to recycle solar panels? Do you get paid for those materials?
We have intentionally excluded out any sort of scrap value of steel, solar panels, copper, whatever, because it doesn't really pass the sniff test when you think 20 years ahead. Like, I don't know what that's going to be worth. So we just take it off the table and we just go strict cost. If there's, if there's a benefit and they do are able to scrap these things, then great. But we don't want to try to play the numbers game and pay a smaller decommissioning fee because I don't think it's really fair to you guys to play the numbers game. And it's also, it's an evolving industry. So I think early on, oftentimes, when you were just sort of dealing with a disposal, there may have been a fee charged for that service. Now there's scrap value in these as facilities get more accustomed to accepting these types of materials. So, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, it's probably going to be far more advanced. But again, as Chris noted, you know, we bake it in with the expectation that it is, there's no, no scrap value. Yeah. Usually, solar panels, when they are scrapped, it's kind of similar to like, you know, computer or cell phones. There's, there's an industry now because we all have smartphones and we're all using computers to deal with electrical waste, electronic waste, I guess is the right way to put it. You know, they like extract all this tiny little rare metals and they do it the right way, you know, in a, an approved facility. That's just going to be an industry that evolves, just like the O and M industry has evolved into kind of this niche thing that wasn't really here 10 years ago, because now you need people to operate these things. Eventually, you're going to need people to, to decommission them and deal with their waste properly.
Yeah, I just was, you know, understanding where we're at right now with the recycling of other materials and how we can't pay people to take stuff and stuff being thrown away. I don't know if there's been any, for, you know, it sounds like you're saying that it's anticipated that panels will only increase in value for scrap, but I'm just thinking, worst case, what if, you know, no one will take these things and you have to pay for it and what that cost would be for decommissioning plan? Again, this is not, this is somewhat tangential, but just considering that now this, our city and this town, we're, this board, we're seeing a lot of proposals or projects. It's something that I've been thinking about, but it sounds like Frank, that it will increase in value.
Yeah, there are rules against just like tossing them in a dumpster anyway, that kind of restrict you from that. And so that's why, you know, with regulation comes market opportunities for those businesses to start up and say, well, if you can't toss them in a dumpster, I'll take them. And I'll be the guy that kind of processes them. Yeah, there's secondary markets for these two. They certainly will still be able to produce power at the end of their useful life. So I guess useful life, they're, the useful life at this site. And so I think we're going to see, you know, as Chris noted, other markets kind of evolve where, you know, those panels have value to maybe a homesteader. They want that. Maybe it's producing 60% of what it did when it was new. Hey, I'll give you 15 bucks for that and throw it on the camp.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I have one, I have one question.
Sure.
Sort of related to stormwater. But is there a contingency plan for if your meadow fails, if you seed it and we get like a week of rain and it washes all the seeds away? Or, or we get no rain and it just fails completely because that could potentially affect.
Sure. So, so during construction, as you'll see in that plan, you know, there's kind of a toolbox approach where we have sort of more traditional stormwater controls installed that will be maintained in place until that meadow buffer is established. So the use of silt fence or erosion control mulch, some of those other kind of structures that are built to address erosion, sedimentation issues. And those will be maintained in place until that meadow is established. And that's an expectation or requirement that the DP has levied on, on, on solar projects kind of statewide.
So if it doesn't take the first season, you will then implement another?
You've got to maintain those hard, sort of hard armoring on the site, like silt fence, erosion control mulch firms until it's established. And if it doesn't take the first season, you got to do it the second season. If it doesn't take the second season, you got to do it the third season. And if, you know, you're really having challenges, you must maintain the, the secondary, I guess, the primary measures until the site is stabilized. Yeah, I think the way we, you know, the way to look at this permit by rule application is not so much like a, a construction application, but rather like a conditions application to say, we're proposing the site to always be like this. And so if it's out of that, if we're out of compliance, it doesn't matter how far down the road we are. We've got to stay in compliance with that.
Thank you.
Sure, a good question. It is.
Okay.
One, one more question. It, it's probably not relevant to this project, but I'm going to ask it because I have the opportunity to ask these guys. It's been on something, it's something that's on my mind and it's come up in other projects. So it looks like the field is going to be below defilade, blocked from the, the street when it's complete because, because of the topography in this case. If that were not the case, and if you could actually see the installation field from the road, are there ever any issues or construction guidelines regarding solar glare where, where it might shine on the road? Is that something you guys ever run into?
That's a common question. Yep. And you know, I think that it's important to understand that these type of solar panels are, you've seen them, they've seen, you've seen them on people's roofs. This is the same kind of a panel that we're even applying this commercial application, but they're designed to absorb sunlight. And their, their whole purpose is to convert that sunlight into, into energy and power. There's actually like an anti-glare coating that's put on the tempered glass on the, on the surface of these that, that it doesn't act like a mirror. So glare tends to not be a problem as much as some people might think. There are certain solar technologies out there. They're actually kind of old. They'll never really be revived again, but like in the desert southwest, they have those like mirrors that sort of face and move to reflect the sunlight. And then they shoot it at a big tower that likes heats up the water and it's like a steam power plant. It's not, this is photovoltaic. It's almost like that's plumbing and this is electrical. Those are mirrors, but that's not our project.
Yeah, these are, these panels are non-reflective. And so, you know, they are absorbing all spectrums of light. And, you know, if, if you have the chance, obviously these are getting installed kind of all over Maine. I know, Chris, you've shared some photos and kind of images. You know, they, they're not bouncing light back at you. Yeah. There's one just behind Dyarts off 95 that you can see from the interstate real well going southbound. You drive by that on a brilliant shining day and it's, you know, they're just black, flat, black panels, nothing.
Or like Sanford Airport, they're putting a, a solar project right next to the runway.
In the runway.
Yeah.
In the apron of a, of a, you know, commercial airport regulated by the FAA. And so, you know, they're not, they're not going to blind anybody.
Not a navigation risk to pilots.
Yep.
A, a, a body of water would be more reflective than these, like a, like a pond or lake as you're flying over. That's what they, they sort of rank this as like lower than that.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions? Let me open the public hearing and Nate and Kerry, do you have anyone for us?
Nothing from Zoom.
And I don't have any comments either, John.
Thank you. So what would the board like to do at this point?
I'll make a motion that we accept as complete the preliminary plan for a major use site development entitled Gilpatrick Solar LLC for Ryan Stare.
Any discussion? None. I vote aye.
Rick Lyles, aye.
Elsa Gill, aye.
Mark Bridge, aye.
Okay, thank you. So the next big exciting item on the agenda is adjournment.
Hold on a second, John. I, I gotta ask Mike, make sure, is this your last meeting, Mike?
This, this is my last meeting.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, nobody convinced you to un-retire, huh?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Your wife.
My appreciation for all your help to this board. And I hope that, I hope your replacement is, is as thick-skinned as you are to, to survive this board.
He's been listening in this evening. His name is Tom Canavan. So you haven't seen him, but he's been kind of in the background listening what's going on.
You're one of the good guys.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Well, Mike, has your, has your wife accepted your retirement?
Yep.
Okay, good. I would like to, before we adjourn, make a small motion that the planning board goes on record as thanking Mike Hangan for the years he spent with us and the assistance he's given us.
Absolutely. Second.
All in favor, please? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Perhaps Kerry can print out a little certificate that you can frame and hang on the wall.
Okay.
And whenever you need to convince someone that you're really a good guy, you can point to that.
Okay, I, I will do that.
Kerry, can you take care of that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Now,
Go ahead.
I think John, did you second the motion to adjourn?
Oh, sure. I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of adjournment, please? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
See you, kids.
Thank you.